Well, welcome tonight. If there has ever been a need for a singular, one cry, a singular focus for an outpouring of God, for the God of this universe to come in great power and to rescue us, the need is right now. I love this Christmas season, don't you? I love it because Emmanuel means God with us. And the great revivals, the great spiritual awakenings of the past certainly had that component. It had that sense where God just saturated His people. And as a result of a revival of the church, there's been spiritual awakenings that encompassed the unbelievers, the lost and entire nations, and ultimately a cultural revolution. And so I just want to say thank you for all of you who are joining tonight to be a part of this very special Tuesday evening. What is typically a prayer gathering tonight is totally different. I was sharing with all of our guests earlier this evening that we have prayed night, Tuesday night, week after week after week after week for almost 10 years for others, for areas of our culture, areas of our segments of need within the nation, the mountains, if you will, the influence centers, and much, much more. But tonight, we are going to pray for the ministry of One Cry. It may sound a little selfish or a little bit of not being as sensitive to everybody else, but I just believe in the depths of my heart. There is a movement. There's a stirring. There are prayer movements taking place. And if there's any time this ministry needs power from above, it needs special anointing, it is now. So I just want to say thank you for joining us. Welcome. Thank you for all of those of you that have been joining on these Tuesday nights, some of you for almost eight years. It's been 10 years now since One Cry was launched. And so this is kind of an anniversary gathering tonight. I'm calling it a town hall because I really want to be interactive, both in the comment boxes, the chat boxes tonight, and also some times where we'll just have a Q and A and we'll stop. And if you have entered a question on that comment box, then we'll try to answer that tonight. And so thank you for just sharing the burden, the vision. Some of you have been prayer warriors. So we have a bunch of intercessors here tonight. Some of you have actually been, we invited everyone who has ever been on as a participant, either facilitating a prayer call since February of 2019, or 2020, or those who have participated with the facilitator. And there have been hundreds upon hundreds, probably seven, eight hundred different individuals who fit that category that we invited to join us tonight. And beyond that, we invited our ministry partners and many others to just come and be a part of what I think will be a very special inspirational, and I believe for you encouraging, and also filled with hope because of what God can do. And so there are six areas that we're going to be praying for tonight. And we're going to be praying with, as we're led by a leader of that area of focus, a One Cry leader. So we're going to be praying for the Collegiate Day of Prayer, which is resurrected, as many of you know, after 100 years of lying dormant, and now prayer taking place on every campus. We're going to be praying specifically for our initiative related to the National Day of Prayer Media Cast. What an incredible privilege it has been to, this past year, be a core partner of that media cast across the nation and the world. We're going to be praying tonight and led by the leader of a conference that'll be coming, or actually one of our hosts of our podcast, and one who leads all of the pastors and leaders that we connect with as a ministry and organization. We're going to be praying for the digital distribution, the whole arena of how digital can be used, even in greater ways than it is already through One Cry. We're going to be praying for a resurrection of congregational prayer in churches across the nation. And finally, but I am so excited at the very end, from an undisclosed country where God is stirring through a One Cry movement, we're going to hear a firsthand testimony from the leader of what God is doing there in that nation in Southeast Asia. It's going to be a full night, but I promise you, I believe you'll be filled with enthusiasm, anticipation, and hope, because we're looking at this as casting a vision in your heart that's in our hearts right now for 2022, and allow you to be a part of that in some very, very special ways. So I want to ask Michael Poole, who's in charge of digital, hey, will you join me for a minute and just further explain some of the things that are going to be happening on the screen and what they'll be able to participate in and with here tonight. So there'll be a slide for each one of these segments, is that right?
That's right. We're going to have a slide shown for each of the categories talked about tonight. And on that slide, you'll see a couple of things. One is the need that we're trusting God to provide. You're also going to see a QR code that will allow you to scan with your smartphone. It'll take you straight to our giving page, along with the link to get there by web. And we're going to talk about a lot of really cool opportunities tonight. Byron's already mentioned. If you're thinking to yourself, wow, I've got a friend who has a heart for this particular thing. It's really easy to share this broadcast with them. If you're watching on Facebook, just go to the chat and start typing their name into the chat. Picture of their face and name should pop up. Just click on them. They'll tag them. That would be an easy way for them to connect with what we're doing tonight. Another way, Thursday, we're going to send out this broadcast via One Cry email. If you're not currently a part of the One Cry email, you want to get the blog, the monthly prayer guide, all of our communication from One Cry, easy to do that tonight. You can go to onecry.com. On the top of the landing page, you'll see a little black box that says Town Hall Meeting. Just go ahead and click on that box. There'll be a chance for you to sign up for the email. There'll also be a special document you can download. That's the Year End Campaign Guide, much greater detail, everything we're talking about tonight, kind of a behind the scenes document. We'd love you to have access to.
Well, that's great, Michael. And if I'm not mistaken, on Thursday, when you get that email, I think we'll be able to access this on YouTube perhaps. And then also, it may even be broken down into these themes and segments. So you may have a friend that's burdened for the campuses, and you can send them just that four or five minute segment tonight, or the international development and growth. And you could send them your friends that segment. We're going to try and make it easy as possible for you to be able to share the vision that's in your heart, I believe, in our hearts, with your friends and people you know that have a common burden for these ministries. So I want to begin by just saying one thing, then introduce our very first guest. When One Cry originated 10 years ago, there were five what ifs that were embedded in my heart, I believe, from the Lord. And they were these. Number one, what if these really are the last days? And if I felt that 10 years ago, I mean, hardly a day goes by when my wife doesn't say, do you think it's today that Jesus is going to return? And I'm telling you, it is embedded in her heart, and I believe in all of our hearts and minds right now. This could be the season. This could be the moment. It is imminent. So what if these really were the last days? Secondly, is what if America is under the judgment of God? What if the remedial judgment of God is upon us, and God has withdrawn His presence, His manifest presence, by way of His Spirit, and the judgment of God is upon us? And thirdly, but what if the promises of revival are still true today? And I believe they are individually, but I also believe collectively. And fourthly, what if there really is something called the latter reign, as mentioned in Isaiah, and as mentioned elsewhere in the Old Testament? What if there is a latter reign that right before the return of Christ, there's an outpouring of God's Spirit, and the bride of Christ is expanded, and the Great Commission accelerates? And all of that happens, what if there is that latter pouring out of the Spirit of God in the ingathering of souls? And then finally, what if God has raised us up as a remnant at this very moment for such a time as this? And so tonight, rooted in everything you're going to hear is that what if, what if these are the last days? And what if America is under judgment? What if the promises of God and revival are true? What if there's going to be a latter reign? And what if you and I, what if we are the remnant that God wants to use for such a time as this? Well, I've asked each of the individuals, each of the executive team leaders of One Cry, some are full time, some are part time, to be able to basically share their heart on that theme, and then to share their vision for 2022, what they would like to see God do, even if it doesn't include One Cry in that arena. And then finally, to be able to share and our need as a ministry in those areas that we're believing God for financially, but then also for that individual to be praying specifically. They're just going to take about four or five minutes. And I want to begin tonight with a dear friend, our National Day of Prayer Chairman for many years now, David Butts. And David is in Terre Haute, Indiana, tonight, I believe. And Dave has led the National Prayer Committee for many years. And he's a friend. He's someone, when we sat down, Dave, I remember a few years ago, you said you're going to embed within the mission statement of the National Prayer Committee, the call for revival and spiritual awakening. And I'll never forget that, how my heart leaped. And so Dave, thank you for joining us. And I know the National Prayer Committee is very engaged with the Collegiate Day of Prayer, as One Cry is, and providing a lot of the services and voices and media production and so forth. So Dave, share your heart, if you would, a little bit about why a collegiate day of prayer.
Byron, thank you so much. And I love those five what ifs, and they have grabbed my heart for years. First, I have to tell you, serving as chairman of the National Prayer Committee is a great, great privilege. But one of the interesting things that happens is everybody that comes up with an idea for a day of prayer, or a week of prayer, or a month of prayer, eventually it comes across my desk. And I have to tell you, 2022 is going to be amazing. There are so many things that are going to be happening. I'm so excited to see what God's going to do because of all the prayer initiatives that he's pouring out upon his people. But of all those things, one of the things that excites me most is the Collegiate Day of Prayer. This is, in a sense, a restart of something that was 100 years ago, was a powerful tool of God to stir up college students all over the nation. And it's been growing over these past few years. And last year, One Cry had a significant role in leading in that. We had representatives there leading and meeting in this and helped in many ways with it. Here's the exciting news. There last year were, there were 4,323 college campuses in the United States, and every single one of them was adopted in prayer. There were groups, there were churches, there were ministries, individuals who adopted those campuses, and they were praying for an outpouring of the Spirit of God upon those campuses. Because you realize, God has always used college students. In the awakenings in this, in this nation, he's used college students, in a sense, as his troops, as those who were right on the front line of all that God was doing. And we realized that at One Cry. And so we've been a part of that. We invest in that. You know, we're praying that God would touch people's hearts. Our needs are kind of minimal, really, but we need about $15,000 to cover our involvement and the leadership that we provide in One Cry to this vast movement of prayer that's taking place February 24th, the Collegiate Day of Prayer. I'm excited about what has happened, but I'm excited about what's going to happen. Would you join me as we pray for this next upcoming Collegiate Day of Prayer, February 24th, 2022? Lord, I thank you so much for what you have done through these past few years, as the Collegiate Day of Prayer has continued to grow and reach more and more campuses. In these last couple of years, we've reached every single college campus. They've been covered by a blanket of prayer. And that means, Lord, that you have been involved in each one of these campuses. We're so excited for that. Lord, we thank you that you've allowed us to be a part of that. And I thank you, Lord, for the leadership that One Cry has had in this, along with so many other ministries who have provided vital leadership for the Collegiate Day of Prayer. Lord, we are looking forward to a movement of your Spirit on February 24th, 2022. It'd be great, Lord, if it happened even before that. But on that day, we know there's going to be such a focus of prayer. Lord, I pray that you would provide all of the leadership that's needed. I pray for the finances that will be needed, both for One Cry, as well as other ministries that are going to be involved in leading out on the Collegiate Day of Prayer. Thank you, Lord, for allowing us to be a part of what you're doing on college campuses in this nation and around the globe. In the powerful name of Jesus, we ask it. Amen.
Amen. Well, Dave, thank you so much. And I know as the National Prayer Committee Chairman, you oversee numerous prayer movements, including what we're going to talk about here in a moment. And that is, there's not only a collegiate day of prayer in our nation, but there is a National Day of Prayer. And if I'm not mistaken, is this correct, that they just celebrated the completion of 70 years since Congress enacted a law that had to be a proclamation that had to be signed by the President of the United States every first Thursday of May for 70 consecutive years? That's amazing.
We're celebrating. We're in that 70th year. We're moving into the 71st, and we're excited of all that God's done with that great day of prayer.
Well, thank you, Dave. And I know Bob Baki that we're going to hear from in just a moment here, has also produced the Collegiate Day of Prayer broadcast in the past. And so that's being televised and it's live streamed and so forth. A great, a great evening every year on the Collegiate Day of Prayer, and also the National Day of Prayer. And you know, folks may be asking, and you may be asking tonight here, how much impact really takes place from one evening of prayer? How do we know it's really making a difference? And I want to go back, and Bob, in a moment here, you're going to remember this so vividly, but I want to play a video by a gal from West Palm Beach, Florida. Her name is Damaris. And Damaris was going to school one night, and she heard the promo. She's going to tell you the story, what would be taking place later that night on the National Day of Prayer broadcast. And God just intervened in every way. So right now, I want you to hear a story of a changed life that is changing lives, somebody who has reached and now reaching others. So thank you, Damaris, for doing this video for us.
Hi, I'm Damaris, and I have the honor and privilege to represent our One Cry Movement here in the South Florida region, specifically in West Palm. And it was in May of 2012, it was the National Day of Prayer, where I was driving to attend a college class. And I came across the One Cry Prayer Summit promo that they were doing for that night. And I was in a place of desperation. I was seeking the Lord, what He had for my life next. And I just felt this pull of the Holy Spirit, and that I needed to be part of that. And so my prayer was, Lord, please allow me to be part of this. I know that there's something here for me that I'm searching for. And so that's exactly what happened. I get out of my class, I'm going straight to my car, turn on the radio, and I just hear these beautiful prayers and the worship and the prayers of God's people that is just happening. And I just began to just flow with tears. And there was this one phrase that forever changed my life to this day. It was, God, would you break my heart for the things that break your heart? And as soon as I began to say that prayer, tears just began to flow through my eyes. And what I felt like God just dripped the roof off the car and just came in, and just His love just fell right through me and just burned in me. And I just felt like there was a revival of love that took place. I had that revelations too, coming back to my first love experience and encounter. And I am just so grateful. It was from that moment on that I've been falling in love with Jesus every single day of my life. And I just want to thank God for One Cry. If it was not for One Cry, if it was not for that moment that God heard the desperate cry of my heart, I don't know where I would be today. And so I'm just so thankful for this movement.
Well, wow, that, that one statement, that I have fallen in love with Jesus every single day, little bit more and more and more. And as Damaris and I have talked over the years, it's been so exciting to see how God is empowering her. And Bob, that all originated out of one of your broadcasts for One Cry. I think that one particularly, we were sitting in Chicago up at the Moody Studios. It was on hundreds of radio stations when she turned it on. And that's the fruit of the labors of broadcasting. And since 1988, if I'm not mistaken, you have been spearheading the production of the programming, the marketing, about everything related to every National Day of Care broadcast, and even the Global Day of Prayer broadcast. So as a pastor at Hillside Church in Minneapolis, thank you for investing so much time in One Cry. And I'd love to, and we would love to just hear what is on your heart tonight for 2022. And why do we even do a National Day of Prayer broadcast?
Well, thank you, Byron. And it's a real privilege to hear a story like Damaris's, just, well, it just blesses me. And of course, it makes, makes everything that we do worth, worth the effort, doesn't it? But we want to multiply the Damaris story millions of times over. And the only way you can do that is through media. The power of media is so remarkable. All of us have grown up in an environment of media. We've grown up with television. I've, I grew up in the, you know, as black and white turned to color, and now it's on multiple platforms. And we can use all of those platforms to summon the body of Christ to be together. And in that unity, and in that singleness of cry and singleness of heart, we can then, well, we can plead with God to answer our prayers. You know, the Bible, Ezekiel, as Ezekiel, the prophet stood before the valley of the dry bones, and he wondered whether those dry bones could live. God commanded him to do two things. He commanded him to preach His word, to prophesy to the bones. Tell them what I told you to tell them. And then he told them a second time, prophesy to the wind. Summon the wind, summon the breath of heaven, summon My Spirit to come and fill those who are dead, that they might live. And they stood up on their feet, a vast army, we're told. And of course, in part, or perhaps in whole, that was fulfilled on the day that Peter stood in the temple precincts, we believe, on the day of Pentecost. He had been bathed in prayer, 10 days of prayer beforehand. He stood in the power of that prayer, and he preached what God had given him to preach. And of course, 3,000 were saved, and the world has never been the same. So we bring all of that to bear on our prayer meetings and on these united prayer meetings. And I'm not one who was given to prayer naturally, but I'm given to prayer because of conviction, because of these two things. And all of us should be. And so I've invested myself, I have mobilized, I've preached on this thing. I've been doing it since 1988. And the Lord isn't done with me yet. But someone might be able to do it better someday. But until then, I just keep doing it. I've done it both domestically, I've done it internationally, I've done it so, so that 220 nations and territories simultaneously have been praying around the earth. But I'm drawn to the United States and then focus my attentions here, because I believe that the greatest contribution I can make to the global spread of the gospel to all the nations of the earth would be the revival of the American church. And so I resonate with you. If this is in fact the last day, and the ends of the earth must be reached, well, for me, and what God has entrusted to me, the revival of this church, this wonderful body of believers in the United States of America, is the greatest contribution I could make, that we could make to our generation. Well, in the last four years, we've been connected in a particular kind of intimate way with the National Day of Prayer Task Force that Dave Butts was mentioning just before. And under the leadership in the last couple of years, wonderful leadership of Kathy Branzel. She is a godly woman, and I love coming alongside of her to partner with her, as does the rest of the One Cry team. But over the last two years, we've been, we've been able to see remarkable collaborations, especially under the weight of the COVID issues. We've seen major and multi-ethnic leaders, leaders like Rick Warren, and Tony Evans, and Robert Morris, and Billy Wilson, and across the, not only the ethnic lines, but also the denomination lines, and large organizations like the Billy Graham Evangelist Association, and the Louis Palau Evangelic Association, and, and other major ministries too, multiple television networks, hundreds of radio stations, numerous streaming sites, YouTube, tens of millions of Facebook Live accounts that we've been broadcasting into. And this year, we've already added an additional partner that we haven't had before, and that's pray.com, which is the world's largest online ministry of its kind, connected over phone apps and mobile apps to literally millions and millions of believers, both domestically and internationally. And in addition, the Green Family of Hobby Lobby fame has invited us to use the beautiful World Theater at the Museum of the Bible in Washington, DC for our site of origin. And we intend then, from that site, to bring in voices not only across the balance of the United States, but also internationally, to show that millions of people across the earth are in fact praying for us. So our 2022 goal is large. We intend to build these coalitions once more. And we intend to produce a powerful night of prayer, but one that will leverage the moment in order to create a movement. Because these nights of prayer are only as, are only as effective as the movements that they launch. What happened in South Florida with Damaris and others across the country, they've started movements, but we want to start a movement to a One Cry Movement for Revival and Spiritual Awakening. And I long to see leaders across the country come to major agreements, covenantal agreements, for the next three to five years, where we would agree together to work in concert with one another, and to do weekly and monthly and quarterly kinds of events that would feed our hunger for revival and spiritual awakening in our land. So the need is significant. We have $135,000 ask. And this really is only a part of the kinds of costs and investment that One Cry makes into all of the collaborations. They aren't paid for by this $135,000. There are many people from across the country who lend to us and give to us airtime and lend to us their expertise and bring, bring to us their talent. And all of the people who come to participate come on their own dime. They pay for their, their own airfare. They pay for their own hotel. So this $135 is really on technical and promotional needs, et cetera. I don't get paid for this. I don't, I don't receive a salary for it. I just do it because I'm called to do it. So this is a fabulous opportunity for One Cry to come alongside of the National Day of Prayer and to leverage all of the 60,000 events that take place that day, and the millions of people who participate annually. And then to give them a vision of revival and spiritual awakening that will take them on throughout the balance of the year. So if you would, pray with me tonight, that God would pour out His Spirit, not only on the colleges of America, but on America itself, across this great land of ours. Father in heaven, you have given us a legacy, this remarkable legacy given to us by saints 70 years ago, and a president and a congress willing to sign it into law. And now, oh God, we ask that the riches of heaven, the riches of your resources, oh God, would be opened and unleashed, that we might see the fruitfulness that we long for, that we might see the desert places bloom once, once again, and the drought, well, that they would see rain, those drought places would see rain. We would see a harvest of souls, men and women, boys and girls, coming to faith in Jesus Christ, with the outpouring of your Holy Spirit, like, like we saw and witnessed in Pentecost. So, oh God, do it again. In our day, we have given ourselves to each other and to you for the extension of your purposes and the glory of Christ. And we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
You know, Bob, I love at the Museum of Bible, the World Theater. There is a sense in which the United States of America is There is a sense in which the United States of America is a theater to the world. And if God were to move through these prayers and these movements, imagine how that theater of the United States would reach the world as the knowledge of the glory of the Lord would cover the earth as the waters cover the sea. And Bob, you have just poured yourself into this year after year after year. And on behalf of all the One Cry family, but really thousands of pastors and leaders, thank you for giving yourself voluntarily to a mission that he is just blessing immensely. And so I just want to publicly say thank you from the One Cry family tonight.
It's a privilege. Thank you.
And wow, family, I, if I look back on this past year and think about what is it that was different this last year than any other year in One Cry? Without question, it was the podcast that we launched. And we're now, and I believe the 31st or 2nd episode of the One Cry Podcast. And if you have not yet seen the One Cry Podcast, you can just Google One Cry Podcast and it takes you directly there to all the past episodes. It's a unique podcast that is growing in not only awareness, but in response and people whose hearts God is touching. And I'm going to reduce our, our next segment in a moment. I want to ask you though, don't forget to ask questions in that comment box. Because after this next segment, we're going to see if there's any questions and take a little time out and try to answer your questions about the Collegiate Day of Prayer or the National Day of Prayer, or what we're going to talk about here in a moment with Bill Eliff. I, I want to begin though, before Bill, we talked to you about another new venture this next year. And by way of conferences, uh, that again, you're going to spearhead like you did the One Cry Podcast this last year. But even before we do that, I just want to give you a little taste, it's very brief, of just what a One Cry Podcast feels like. So here, catch this.
The duration of time it takes from the voice of God to you acting determines the volume of God in your life. Think about that.
So I wanted to share that very brief clip because some of you recognize who that is. It's Robbie Gallo in whose church in January this last year, God literally came in great power. And with a matter of weeks, a thousand people came to Christ, were baptized. It was actually in my 46 years of revival ministry, one of the clearest and most unexplainable moves of God. And the reason I wanted to mention that too is because the podcast then, part of its intent is when God begins to move to tell the stories. So we have as a part of each of our broadcasts, a teaching segment, a prayer segment, but a testimony, a story ideally, and generally where God is at work right now. And that puts faith in the heart of listeners, doesn't it Bill? And you and Kyle Reno, man, and next generation co-host of the One Cry Podcast. You guys are doing a phenomenal job and it is putting thirst and hunger, but more than that, understanding where in essence, training pastors and leaders through the podcast about the ways of God and revival, which ties in specifically to what's on your heart starting this April.
Well, that's exactly right Byron, and thank you so much. You know, I have so often thought how critical it is to understand the ways of God. I mean, David, the King David said, Lord, let me know your ways so that I can know you. And, and part of that is if we don't know how God operates, then we can go at cross purposes. We could even abort some things that God would desire to do. And so part of the podcast's purpose is to have a voice and many voices from around the nation every week. Just teaching and training how God operates in revival and in spiritual awakening. And this year we're very excited to be hosting another event that we, we just pray would, would move the, the, and accelerate the work of revival and, and spiritual awakening. In April, we're going to be doing kind of an invitation only, uh, uh, conference or gathering called It's Time. And it is time, isn't it? I mean, even that, those two words, it's time. It's time for God to come. It's time for God to redeem us. This is what the psalmist cried out in Psalm 85. Oh Lord, when, when are you going to come? Will you not revive us again? And so for two days, we're gathering particularly, we're targeting younger leaders to spend two days just thinking about the ways of God and how we cooperate with him to help get in a position to, uh, to move forward with him and join him in his work of spiritual awakening. You know, before every great awakening in human history and even in the scriptures, you can see, trace very clearly, uh, something that God always does to prepare his people for his coming in an extraordinary manifest way. And we believe that he's been doing that right now in the last eight to 10 years, bringing us to desperation, raising up voices, accelerating the movement of, of prayer and fasting across our nation. I don't know how many thousands of churches will be joining in 21 days of fasting and prayer in January. Uh, and no one started that movement except God. And he's preparing us. But there are many, many pastors and leaders who, uh, long for revival, who now are praying for revival. But if it came, they would be very ill-prepared, might even quench the spirit in terms of revival. And so this convocation, this gathering, if you would, for two days, the first of, of April is designed to inspire and to educate, to look at the primary themes of revival, uh, just to raise up a host of leaders. And by the way, if you know some young leader that is passionate about revival, but could benefit from this, would you let us know? Just send an email to One Cry. I think you can get it at info@onecry. You can find a way to do that. But let us know the name and contact information. We'll invite them to this, uh, gathering in April. We, we're asking the Lord to provide another $25,000 to do all that needs to be done to pull this, uh, convocation together. So thank you so much for praying for that. And if God prompts your heart, uh, giving to that, that God might prepare a whole new generation of revival and awakening leaders, uh, in these coming days. Let me pray for us that God would do exactly that. Father, we're so grateful for who you are and what you've done. We're so grateful that you don't just, uh, birth the church and then walk away from it. But even when we walk away, even when our hearts go cold, Lord, you have always come periodically, uh, to open up the windows of heaven and remind us what heaven looks like, remind us of what the church, uh, should look like. And to really accelerate your work in our generation and raise up leaders and people who understand your ways uh, in, in new understanding. So Father, we, we thank you for the conferences and the, and the movements and the information that's and teaching and training that's going on, on not just with One Cry, but with, with many other entities across our nation and really around our world. Lord, you've called us to be a part of it right here. And it calls for everything that's in us, or every bit of prayer, every bit of surrender, every bit of thought, every bit of collaboration to cooperate with our great God. And Lord, we just want to cry out with the psalmists, oh Lord, it's time. It's time. Please, oh Lord, please come. And please let us be a part of seeing your work in our day for our lives, for the millions of people that don't know you, for our children and grandchildren. And Father, most of all, for the glory of God, that you would be magnified in ways that we are depriving you of now across our land. So Lord, please come in power in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. And Bill, I was just, as you were praying and just hearing your heart. And I know you weep for the glory of God to be on display. And I think it's about 11 years ago that you saw the fire right there where you pastor at Summit Church. And, and, uh, that, that fire has penetrated so many hearts there in Little Rock and, and your own heart in fresh ways. And, and, and they say, when you've seen the fire, you've been in the fire, it what? The smoke's on your clothes forever. And, um, I just, uh, I, I just want our folks to know that this whole passion is not something that is a pie in the sky thing that we've never witnessed. But I remember in a city of 45,000 people, when God moved, I said, uh, 45 years ago, I'll spend the rest of my life just at one more touch of God, one more outpouring of God. And so Bill, just thank you for leading the way. You have been part of this executive team of One Cry since day one, uh, since it was launched. And just so grateful for our friendship, but more than that, just our, our alignment for longing for God's presence.
Well, it's my privilege and absolute joy. Thank you Byron.
Amen. I want to transition now to what is a new world. And COVID really helped us all experience what in theory we knew was true. And that is digital, digital, digital. And, uh, it forced us as a One Cry family to only expand in an area where we were already postured and had laid a foundation because One Cry's never had a lot of money. Uh, and therefore we just said the cheapest way, the most efficient way to get the mission, the message, mission fulfilled, the message out is by way of digital. And we also fully realize, Michael, that some of us who are a little older, actually tonight so far, most of us who are a little older are not the ones to take the lead in the digital world. That that's something that your generation grew up with. And I'm just so grateful. This is Michael Poole. He's been a part of the One Cry family and the Life Action Ministry family now for, wow, a decade or so. And, uh, really pours himself into, I'm telling you, every email you get, every daily post on social media, a prayer, a quote. Every Tuesday night broadcast of the prayer gathering, uh, and, and almost every way, because everything's, almost everything is digital. Michael Poole is right at the heart and the center of it. So Michael, talk to us a little bit about, uh, what's happening in the digital world and, uh, yeah, what we can expect in 2022.
Byron, it's an honor, uh, to connect with the One Cry community digitally. And One Cry has some incredible resources, uh, whether that's the Church Experience Kit or the Revival Champions, uh, to train pastors and leaders, the podcast you've mentioned. We're not an event ministry. We're an equipping and a training ministry. And the best way we do that is through online and social media marketing. You can have some great resources, but if people don't know about them, uh, they're not going to do them any good. And so it's been a pleasure to be able to help produce some of that content and to get it in front of pastors and individuals, uh, community leaders, uh, and intercessors. And I'm grateful that God's given me that opportunity. And, um, I, I love what we do every day with the online prayer picks. Um, the best way for me to, to see it, uh, is to think of, let's say you're driving down the road, uh, in your car. And there's a worship song on the radio and you're just in your moment. Uh, it's just you and the Lord in the car and you're worshiping him. And you pull up to a stop sign and you look over and you notice that the person next to you is also listening to the same station, worshiping in that moment. And you have this really crazy understanding that there are hundreds of thousands of other believers right now worshiping God along with me in this moment. I'd say our daily prayer prompts are just like that. Uh, it's a chance for you, uh, to connect with thousands of other believers around the world, praying for your homes, your churches, your communities, biblical prayers. And, um, that's what we do and we love it. Now I want you to imagine that you look to the other side of the car and you notice someone who is singing the same song, but in a different language. One Cry has been blessed with, uh, a translation of the One Cry book, Um Clamor. It's an incredible resource for our Latin American and Hispanic friends. Uh, the problem is we have no way of communicating with them. Our vision and hope for the next year is, uh, to be able to interact with and launch a Um Clamor Facebook page, uh, to allow us to carry these prayer prompts, uh, to the Latin American world. Um, we need help with that. Uh, we need you to pray that God would provide someone who can translate, uh, someone who can moderate, uh, the social media world, uh, for our Spanish friends. Uh, we also are asking and trusting the Lord for around $50,000. Uh, that'll do several things for us. One, it would help us take our message to an international audience. And it will help us get our resources, uh, to those who need them the most. The Facebook algorithm is a mysterious thing. But if we're able to put some dollars behind boosting and we trust God to get it in front of the right eyes, then, uh, God can use social media to do some incredibly amazing things. And so that's what we're trusting him to do. Uh, let's, let's pray in that direction right now. God, we praise you that you are sovereign and holy and righteous. And that you've made yourself known to us. We thank you for that. Thank you for giving us your word. We pray that you would raise up more and more people who will unite their hearts in prayer, uh, using the One Cry daily prayer prompts and the prayer guides. And that they would tell others that they would have a deep passion that you give them to commit to daily praying your word back to you. And God, I pray that you would prompt people, uh, to invest in that, that we can take those prayer prompts even further around this world. I pray that you would provide us with a brother or a sister, um, who knows Spanish and is able to carry this message, uh, to that audience. And God, that, that your kingdom can grow and advance and that we can just play that small part in the work that you're doing. We praise you for that work. And again, just give it all to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. And Michael, Michael, I'm so glad you mentioned about Anclamor and that whole Spanish opportunities. You know, we, we're housed in a building with our sister ministry. And, uh, they had, I think last year somewhere around 80 million downloads of their, of their broadcast. Not just a view, but downloads of their broadcast last year. But over 50% of them were in Spanish. That God has put a hunger and a thirst for truth in the heart of Spanish speaking world, uh, like we've never seen before. So in a matter of 20 years, we revive our hearts. In the last seven years, the Spanish audience has grown so rapidly that it has surpassed now digitally the English speaking audience. So wow, I can, I'm beginning to imagine what God could do through a One Cry Spanish. In a moment here, we're going to talk about international, God's using, uh, One Cry in other nations. And be able to get it in Spanish throughout Latin America and elsewhere will be incredible. So thanks, Michael, for having that vision, uh, for that. And as we're talking about, uh, prayer gatherings and as we're talking about the, the criticalness of prayer, uh, I, I want, uh, all of our listeners to know that there was something established, uh, really centuries ago during the First Great Awakening, but then resurrected by the National Prayer Committee called the National Prayer Accord. It was reintroduced just several years ago now. And in a simplified form, it's praying on the ones. Once a week, pray for your pastor and the preaching of the word. Once a month, unite as a congregation and pray. Once a quarter, unite as a community, as a city or as a community of churches and pray unitedly as a community. And once a year, already established on that bookend, is praying once a year as a nation, together, united, for God to send revival and spiritual awakening. And I remember Leonard Ravenhill, prolific author of the last century. And he studied, he told our staff one time, he said, you know, it seems like we've gone from a pastor standing up on Sunday morning and saying, let's come back together tonight. And let's have a season of prayer. To where he would stand up and announce, we're going to have an hour of prayer. To where it said, let's take a few moments and pray. To where it eventually went, would you bow your heads and pray with me for a second? And that has been what And that has been what's transpired here in our culture, I believe, in America, to where literally there are no longer many congregational prayer meetings, not once a month, not once a week, and sadly, rarely even in many places, once a year. And we want to do something about that. If there's going to be united prayer, I believe it needs to begin with the congregations, with the local churches. And we've had it on our heart that God would, in a, in a very short period of time, within the next year or two years, resurrect congregational prayer in at least 5,000 congregations, 5,000 churches. And I am so thrilled that somebody that shares that burden, shares that vision, and is seeking the Lord diligently on saying, Lord, how do you want to use me to help lead that effort? Is a pastor out of Huntsville, Alabama, a friend, I call him a revivalist, because Darrell, the first time I met you in North Carolina, you stood up and you introduced me, but more than that, you poured your heart out in prayer for revival. And I leaned over to my wife, I leaned over to Sue and said, Sue, I want to recruit that guy to our ministry someday, because this is his passion and his burden. And we've been tracking with each other now for a long time, and I know you were a part of the original team that really founded One Cry. There 10 years ago, as we met together often, I just want to say thank you. And, and even today, we were meeting as a One Cry executive team on a totally different topic than the gathering tonight. But we learned today that somebody that has been very involved in helping to mobilize churches and leaders to prayer throughout states in the nation just noted they want to come and help us do that as well. So Darrell, would you share with our folks tonight, just your burden to see congregational prayer and how they can pray with us? And then lead us in prayer, that God would literally move on thousands of churches to begin having not just prayer meetings, but crying out to the Lord in power-filled, spirit-abiding prayer that people love to be a part of.
Thank you, Byron. It is a joy to be able to be a part of this. And when I think about this burden for churches gathering together to pray, I think as a pastor, we always want to be certain that we are spirit-led and word-driven, that the word of God is what guides us. Now, I'll never forget several years ago, doing a study in the Book of Joel, and this was really about the time that we were talking about One Cry, and it wasn't called One Cry at that time. But I was studying the Book of Joel, and I came to that second chapter when the solemn assembly was called for. And there are three words that are used there. Gather the people, assemble the elders, gather the children and the infants. And I began to look at the church praying in the Book of Acts, and I just was overwhelmed about how important it is for God's people to come together, and the power that there is in God's people crying out. And I want to read just one sentence from the Declaration of National Spiritual Emergency that One Cry has. It actually says this. Together, we wish to travel the narrow road of brokenness, repentance, and humility. And if we're going to travel that road together, I'm convinced, and I know in my own heart and life, that I need to be on this journey with other believers, and that as a pastor of a local church, when our people gather together and seek the face of God, I'm convinced that God will pour out His Spirit and lead us and change us in ways that won't happen otherwise. I think about the fact that we're told that there are approximately 380,000 churches in the United States of America. I don't know what all that consists of. All I know is this, that if we're saying that we want to begin with 5,000 churches, what if only 1.3 to 1.5% of all of the churches in America were to become desperate for God together in prayer? And I believe that's going to happen as we communicate, share this message, and inspire pastors about the importance of seeking the face of God together with the people of God. So that's why I'm a part of this. I'm, I'm glad to be a volunteer. I'm glad to be someone who gets the privilege of just being at the, at the table to hear what God is doing and how He is working. And it thrills my soul. And so as we think about this and, and wanting to help pastors and churches not only see the biblical foundation, but to, to know the inspiration of what it means to come together in prayer, that's what we want to accomplish. And as we think about the needs of this initiative, I know that we have a budget goal of about $45,000. And, and you say, well, what does that do? If, if there are volunteers involved and people are giving their time, what are the resources needed for? Well, we've got to communicate. And with that communication, we have to inspire through resources. And we don't only want to inspire pastors and churches to come together and pray, but we want to help resource them with materials and information that they can use to help them seek the face of the Lord together. So I just want to say, it's a burden out of my heart that's grown out of the word of God and the Spirit of God working in me. And I believe that God will use churches gathering together and seeking His face to make a difference. I'd like to pray right now that God will raise up pastors and churches who long to seek His face together. Let me pray for us. Lord, I just want to thank you so very much for this One Cry gathering. Lord Jesus, you have given us this privilege and joy of seeking you. And God, you know, every pastor that has a burden for this already. And I thank you, God, that you're going to bring us together, that we're going to encourage one another, that we're going to strengthen one another. God, I plead with you that you would raise up an army of praying churches that become praying communities, that become praying regions, so that this nation is so overwhelmed with prayer for revival and awakening, that God, we would hear from heaven, and that you would send your Spirit, and that you would pour out your Holy Spirit in a way that God would change us forever. God, you know every resource that we need. You know the resources needed to help fund every aspect of what's been discussed tonight. And I'm asking God that you would raise up the people and the resources for us to see you do an amazing work, that you would call us together to cry out with one cry for your glory and for your praise. I pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Well, thank you, Darrell, and so grateful that God's put that on your heart and look forward to how God's going to use it. And finally tonight, but boy, don't miss this. God has taken One Cry and has birthed other One Cries around the world. I had a call yesterday from India of somebody that God has really used throughout India, and now we're discussing how a One Cry movement can be launched in India. I had somebody send me a video of newscasts out of South Korea yesterday, and it's the newscasts that are announcing the first day of January, a One Cry gathering in a large arena there in South Korea that's been going on now for five years. And it just is the whole heart of One Cry, all the branding and everything is One Cry. I love it when God spreads something, and it's not of us. But there is one particular nation that I can't disclose tonight, in Southeast Asia, where security is, is tight and restrictions on our end need to be strong. And God has really birthed something there that is igniting a flame. And so tonight, from Southeast Asia, Wayne Bridgman is joining us. I'm asking to just turn off his video and to speak to us audio tonight, so we can hear what God is doing. As a result of your investment, many of you, a result of your investment in prayer and finances there in Southeast Asia. So Wayne, are you with us?
Yeah. Good morning. How you doing?
Good evening.
Thanks for having me. Yeah. Yeah, what I, what I would like to do is just kind of share how the manifested presence of God affected not only our country, but I think other countries as well. You know, sometimes God chooses to work and start a movement among missionaries, and that was true of what we see going on here in Southeast Asia. In 2018, we met together, International Mission Board missionaries gathered in Southeast Asia in a city where our leader, David Platt, came and preached to us. But we were going to discuss a missionary document that particular week, but God had other plans, and we experienced God's manifested presence where some of the things that happened in the Shantung Revival back in 1927, when Bertha Smith was there, and Brother Cole Pepper was there, and it started what's called the Shantung Revival. It started with missionaries, and it spread out to the nationals. And during our time there, we just experienced the manifested presence of God, where people just started confessing their sins to one another. And we went into the night and just sang and praised God together, and just enjoyed His presence. And it was there that God began to speak to my heart, and, and I began to ask questions. How can we take this back to the countries that we serve in, that this wasn't an accident? That we had missionaries from the International Mission Board meeting from all over the world in that, in that one week, in that period of time. And they experienced something, it's the first time I had ever experienced anything like that. I had, I had read about it, and I was part of the latter part of the Jesus movement, but we wanted that, I wanted to see that happen in the country where I served. And I started thinking, what if that could happen in the country where every one of these missionaries from the International Mission Board serves, that they would carry it back to their team members, their national team members, and to see it begin to spread? And that's how it kind of got started in May 2018. A year later, a little bit more than a year later, God used Bill Ella when he came out to our area in Southeast Asia and spoke to all of our missionaries there in a meeting for about four or five days. And what he did, God used Bill in a, in a great way to just fan the flames of revival that had been started back 2018, a year earlier. And he just, what I believe, started a movement of prayer, a prayer revival among our missionaries in, in Southeast Asia. And I remember him talking about the One Cry book. He said, you need to get that book. And that was the first thing I did when I got back to my place of service, ordered that book, and boy, the Lord just set my heart on fire, the seeing that happening where we're serving. I used the remainder of 2019 to just travel around to hold revivals, and also to conduct some seminars on principles and practices of revival and spiritual awakening. And then COVID hit. And then we started listening to the three broadcasts a week from One Cry and just pray together, and our hearts were just broken to see revival take place not only in the United States, but in the place where we serve, because we were all shuttered up into our houses at that time. And then during that time, we started in, in May 2020, we started what's called the One Cry Country where we serve. And it was for IMB missionaries, and we all just prayed together. It brought us together, it united us. It fanned the flames that had already got started back in 2018. And, and boy, that was exciting. And then by February 2021, we started the One Cry Movement among our national churches here in the country where I serve. And we had that, we had it last night. We have about, average about 200 pastors and lay leaders that gather every Tuesday night here from the word of God. And last night, we talked, we had a guest speaker who shared about a revival that he experienced in Nepal when he was living there. And he didn't see any fruit at all in his ministry. And then he asked God, what is it in me that's a hindrance to seeing you move in my ministry? And he had personal revival. And then over the next several years, he began to see God work in churches, work in his cities, and all across that nation of Nepal to see revival. And he just shared that testimony, that was just last night, and what a blessing it is to see that the key was started when he got right with the Lord, that he drew in that circle that we hear so much about, that you stand in the middle of it, like D.L. Moody, then said, Lord, let the revival start here. And that's what we're seeing. And just continue to pray for us that this revival would spill over into a spiritual awakening where we see, we're praying this year in our country for 100,000 people to come to Christ. He can do it. He's done it in the past in this country. And I believe he can do it again. So that's kind of what we're praying for. And you know, I, I look at the goal that we have, $25,000. And I haven't really consulted much with Byron about this, but I believe that, that money that we're trying to raise for One Cry can be used to help translate the book that started it all here in the country where I serve, One Cry. And it could be used to help translate that into other languages. And we want to, we would love to see this expand to other countries, because many representatives from our sending agency were at that meeting in 2018. And they've tasted the manifested presence of God in a way that perhaps they never had before, just like me. And I'm sure that they long to see that happen in their own country. So through this gift and the gifts that you give to international growth, we can use this to help in translation needs, and also in just logistic needs in getting the things that are available that you have in the United States to us, like, people like us here in the country where I serve, where they have a website and they can get in and, and make use of the resources that are available to this. So let me just pray for you and pray for this particular area of international growth for One Cry Southeast Asia. Father in heaven, what a joy it is to be able to join a group like this. It humbles me to just be a part of this. And Lord, we just thank you how you use folks like Bill Ella and Byron Paulus, that use them to help kindle the fire, to help to expand the fires of revival prayer in the country that we serve here in Southeast Asia. And Lord, how we long to see that spread, not only in our country, but all over Southeast Asia and all over the world, where some of these folks tasted how good you are when your manifested presence was given there in that meeting there in Southeast Asia in 2018. We praise you. We thank you for what you're going to do. And we lift this up in the name of Jesus, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Well, amen. And thank you, Wayne, for early morning hours there and joining us. And I just want to close tonight by just asking you to take some moments and ask God what it is that He would want you to do to further the mission of One Cry. And I have a slide here that just kind of summarizes everything we talked about tonight, and all six areas, how much we are believing God for. And you know, we have a very simple philosophy of fundraising, and here it is. We have the responsibility to share the opportunity, but it's God's Spirit's responsibility to prompt the heart, and it's the individual's responsibility to obey His prompting. And so all I would ask you, all we collectively would ask you tonight, would you take some moments, even immediately, as you complete this viewing and this particular media cast? Would you even get on your knees, if you're with your spouse, maybe join with your spouse? And would you say, Lord, what is it that you want us to do? You know, the key is not how much you give, but how obedient we are in relation to how God prompts us to give. So if He prompts you to give $50, God blesses obedience. Some of you, God has blessed financially, and you can give thousands of dollars. It's obedience that God blesses. And maybe perhaps some of you, God has really blessed. And you could say tonight, you know, it's possible, we could honestly And you could say tonight, you know, it's possible, we could honestly, over the next few months, into next year, underwrite this entire campaign of $295,000. You say, wow, Byron. No, wow, God, He is big enough to be able to prompt your heart to do that. And I do want to say, God is already moving, some gifts have come in, but by December 31st, we're asking God for $295,000. So these plans we have, this vision in each of these areas for 2022 can go forward. Lord, I pray for every person that hears this opportunity. God, you know the material support that is needed to be able to do what you've called us to do. And then, God, I just pray your Spirit would prompt the hearts as they seek your face of those that you want to partner and participate with us. And then, God, out of obedience, I pray that the entire need and way beyond would be met. And God, we know you're a big God. We know you're faithful. We know you're unlimited in resources and we know, Lord, you have, we have a history with you of providing. So do it again. And we pray this and pray a mighty blessing upon everyone who hears this vision and who responds in prayer in any other way to advance the mission, including finances. We pray this in the powerful name of Jesus Christ. Amen and amen. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. And again, you'll be getting an email on this Thursday. And in that email will be a recording of this, how you can access it on YouTube, how you can forward segments of it to others. And go to onecry.com and at onecry.com, you will be able to give towards our year-end campaign. This is the only time all year we've done anything like this, once a year. And I want to just ask you to pray with us for that need to be met. Good night. God bless every one of you.